And local authorities. The other piece of information we sought from the developers and the landowners is that they are going to have an agreement of their own. And we would like to see that agreement. It will be a commercially sensitive agreement, which you may appreciate. Some of it will be redacted and maybe a document when we bring that forward. So those are the four documents that we've sought from the various parties. And when we think there are a position to come forward, we'll more than happy to go into the next one.
Thank you, Mr Brown. Yes, sorry, just for the our benefit, the current forward plan has got proposed developments on the subject of March. That's obviously a date. It's on the forward plan, but I think in terms of, I just want some large expectations in terms of that date may shift.
I had every expectation that that date would shift backwards, as it was discussed earlier this week. Mr Roxy.
Yes, thank you. So it's still on the same subject. When we were talking about spatial strategy, I asked about liaising with neighbouring authorities. And there is, on figure two, there's a scale of proposed new housing in local plans or neighbouring areas. But it does stay in 2.41, which is what I mentioned. The council continues to work with neighbouring authorities and statutory policy to satisfy the duty to cooperate. Relevant statements of common ground will be available on the council's website to coincide with a statutory public consultation on this local plan. So I would suggest that that's something which should actually be in this document, if we can. Whatever, because we're asked again, we're asked to make comments, make decisions, but we haven't got all the information in front of us.
Mr Brown, so, no?
I think I have to say, as I said before, which is that the plan that we consult on has to be the plan that we submit. And therefore, there will be some statements in there relating to evidence that forms part of the submission documents. And the duty to cooperate statement is one of those things. So it's written as it would be when we submitted. The statement of duty to cooperate is in preparation, as you are sure will understand. There is a list of prescribed bodies. It's not just on local authorities. It's people like Highways Agency, Environment Agency, Historic England, Natural England. So there are a number of prescribed bodies that we have to have worked with, which we have worked with over the years that we've been developing the plan. And we are in the process of liaising with them to get them to consider these statements of common ground. And the duty to cooperate statement will be available when we consult, because it has to be. But at this stage, it's still not finalised, although those discussions and the draft is almost there.
Just coming back, because as I say, the number of houses which are being built in the surrounding area, I mean, huge, huge numbers put up. And, for example, in Corby, it's fourteen and a half, nine thousand two hundred through to fourteen and a half thousand. Eastern Althamtonshire, eight and a half thousand. Peterborough, nine, nearly twenty thousand. South of Stephen, fifteen and a half thousand. Leicester, twenty-five and a half thousand. So, I mean, if there's over building in other parts of, in adjacent areas, will that impact on our ability to deliver here if people are buying houses in other parts of the region? And we, you know, we're building houses, we can't sell them.
Yes, please. And the levels of growth that I've shown on that key diagram in the plan are largely in adopted plans already. So they're already satisfied that they are meeting their strategic housing market assessment needs. And they will be following the similar calculation that's already set out in our strategic housing market assessment. So, yes, they're big numbers. And they're big numbers because the level of need is high. The level of need across the whole country is very high. It's significantly lower than it is in most other places. So those growth figures are already approved in adopted plans. We have been part of their duty to cooperate, as they've been telling from their plans. And we're saying how they're part of our duty to cooperate whilst we're developing our plan. And we've had conversations with all of our neighbouring authorities, both in developing our plan and in developing their own. What's also important to notice is that those growth figures have also fed into our own habitat regulation assessment, particularly for water. And also our consideration in terms of the sustainability of it, because it's a cumulative effect, which you quite rightly point out. So, yes, they're high, but they are meeting their own need. And the market will over-deliver what the market can deliver. So that should, they should be addressing what the market is requiring. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Good.
Are you satisfied with that, Mr Roxy?
Well, yes, as best I can be. I mean, I think there's still an issue with regards to infrastructure and people driving in and out of the county and going to work. But it is very complicated. So we'll just have to wait and see how it develops.
I would like to remind everybody that the meeting is scheduled to finish at nine thirty. We can go on beyond that if members choose to request that we do so. But it would be quite nice if we could finish a bit earlier this time. So can we move on to another topic area, please? Nick.
Yes, Chair. I have other topic areas, rather than the big tickets that people have talked about this evening. I'd just like to say, I've received some extremely positive comment from local groups about the plan and the site allocations proposed, rather than it just being negative. I just thought I'd share that with everybody. There are certainly from locals' perspective, there's been some very positive feedback in the proposal that's put forward. But moving on, under the definition of towns and our strategy for towns within the plan, 655 talks about commercial leisure use and how we're developing. And this is not something you're going to need to spend too much time on. But we talk about as an authority that we support, will be given for suitable planning applications for residential office purposes, a public plan, blah de blah, complementary uses, in order to diversify the offer of centres and support vitality and viability outside retail trading areas. I just wondered if you could define what that word 'support' means? Because I'm guessing that doesn't mean putting your hand in your pocket and helping our towns.
I doubt that. You'd be better than that. Could you just point out a particular paragraph we're looking at? Is that a policy?
It's on, I don't think I've got it. Yes, 655, but policy E9. How does the sections about town centres and retail?
When we say support, they're probably in favourable consideration in terms of planning applications. It's, you know, because of the fact that those sorts of applications would add to the vitality and viability of town centres. They obviously then be determined within the, or assessed against the policy that it's, well, it was just to indicate that the policy was worthy of favour in terms of supporting them.
Okay, that's great. And I think, Chair, we haven't actually explained to members and the audience that we have all agreed how we would share questions out. So it doesn't look like that Nick's the only one that cares about much of it.
That's absolutely right. And because this is a very long document, we had also agreed in advance that we would try and group the questions around topic areas, which is why people say, are we moving to a new topic? It's not to stifle debate, it's to try and get through everything so people don't go away feeling frustrated. They've not been able to, they're staying.
Thank you, Chair. And the area that I am flagging is, as everyone knows, council has recently passed a climate action motion. And I just wondered if the portfolio holder for climate action could hand on heart say that he believes this local plan embraces the essence of that climate action? And if there's any room that we have to improve it, or are we happy? This is the intent that we all agree to as a council recently.
Chair, I think there's a number of points. First of all, the plan set, the local plan set, I think goes a long way further forward than the draft 2017 document in terms of the actions relating to better efficiency, better designed homes, et cetera. And I'm pleased at that. However, you get to a point where you've got planning on one side and verbal negotiations on the other side. And so we must be careful not to go into building regs, I think, because they're very clear. The other side is that the question of viability then starts. We can say, yes, we want passive housing, we want, you know, slinky ground source heat points, we want P E V, et cetera. But ultimately, the question of viability can try. Now, the question of St George's, to my knowledge, there is in fact a requirement within the evolving master plan that there is in fact P E V and electric charging points and a potential there. So that is a different step up. However, I would like to bring the attention to the scrutiny panel of the consultation the government is doing on building regs. And I think this will answer some of the concerns that Mr Woodley might have. It's called the Future Home Standard, and it's a 2019 consultation, 2019 consultation on changes to Part L of building regs. I'm happy to circulate this document to each member. About conservation of fuel and power, and also Part F, which is about ventilation of homes of the building regs for new dwellings. Now, the government, in this document, is very clear that they want to bring forward some early changes. In particular, the consultation sets out our plans for achieving future home standard, which is a much higher standard, including proposed options to increase the energy efficiency requirements for homes in 2020 as a meaningful and achievable stepping stone towards future home standards. So we're seeing government actually laying down the stepping stones that we will follow. Now, because that is nationwide, from our point of view, this should not affect the vulnerability. From our point of view, that is a requirement, that's the end of it. It's not a requirement of our plan. And so it's very, we're going to be very careful what we push forward and what we hold on to. But no, I think Mr Woodley's very aware of my deep interest in climate change and making sure that we are moving forward rapidly in these areas. My colleagues want to add to that.
I think that was quite a clear answer. My, yes, Mrs Payne, please. Does that document also deal with the future installation of gas? Because there's no mention of it in this document.
I'm checking. I'm looking very closely. My understanding is that there was a separate announcement by the Minister of Energy and Climate and Parks, which says it's their objective to stop the installation of gas boilers from 2025 onwards. And I'm just looking at my colleagues and they're acknowledging that. So I don't believe it's in this particular document, a separate announcement as part of the development. And I think quite clearly we recognise that we'll obviously be sure about it. Think, think the point.
You can do on.
Sorry, I think the point is, as the councillor was saying, these issues are picked up through building regulations rather than through the planning policy. So, yeah, we wouldn't get down to that level of the term of the planning policy. And indeed, if we tried to do that, then the risk would be for the family because it would be seen as going outside the range of the local policy. So the future home standard is the way forward. I think we, I'd like to see even more change coming as the government gets to grips about climate change and what will happen. There are other policies in here to look at, issues like flooding and flood risk, to make sure we're obviously not looking at term of modern development in those areas. There are policies in here, obviously, around electric charging points, carbon energy provision, such like, as well as water efficiency and energy efficiency, areas which we tend to. We can occasionally do that. So, you know, for the question of looking at the elderly population, we can set a high standard for building regs for adaptable and accessible homes. But there are two tests for that really. One is then the demand, and part of the demand is to clear population change and that sort of thing. And then second is looking at what the impact is on climate policy. So again, there's quite an ambitious target around accessible and adaptable homes to try and lead future housing in terms of that basis. And we've tested that through our whole climate policy at present. So that's really interesting to see where we can maintain that through the year.
Nick.
Can I ask a supplementary?
Mr Woodley, it's to third you, Mr Peggy.
Sorry, just to go on, Karen's gas issue. If I'm right, it says that the regulations are likely to mean phasing out of gas after 2025. And if St George's went ahead, would we be spending a lot of money on gas infrastructure, which actually, most of the buildings actually won't take advantage of?
That's a very good question, one I've asked myself. There's not a lot of money in for gas infrastructure compared to some of the old electricity in particular. But, yeah, there's a question about, could you cook as well? It's not just about that, but certainly there's a question that will be asked up over St George's in one certain touch.
Mr Henson.
There's also some interesting developments of introducing hydrogen and the new golden boilers that run gas can actually burn hydrogen, so some might be done of that. Older boilers can take 20% hydrogen mixed with gas. So there is some interest in doing some type of thing. So I think that's what we need to be looking at when we're going to, and we have brought back the youth lot of electricity to make the hydrogen at the moment. So it's been a good number of.
Mr Woodley.
Yeah, following on, I mean, it's something Mr Anderson made me think about, actually. In our policies, we, maybe I've missed it, but it's, I've heard mention of existing homes and protected, you know, existing buildings and our abilities to flex our rules around, um, the way they're doing things. Is that in his policy? And if so, what? Yes, well, why have I missed it? And I apologise if I have.
I'll have to quickly think through it. It will be in the policy around doing this historic assets. We've included an additional caveat, which is to make a judgment really about considering what's being proposed in terms of energy efficiency and judging that about the individual impact on the nature of the listing. So in simple terms, the obvious one to look at is the double basing, the double etcetera. Just basically saying, well, the judgment is, how does that impact on whatever the nature of the historic building is? So some might be more centred towards that than others. But then it's a balance then to say, well, what are you trying to achieve through energy efficiency and all the signs of that? So it gives a bit more flexibility than the approach that's been taken previously, which is, I must say, taking a harder line in terms of conservation, is not trying to burden ourselves too much. So, and if I, I can't find it in the minute, so there is a change in the policy.
Got it. It's EN 16, Alex, section five of that policy, which refers to reusing stock.
Greg, thank you. How does we, while in the area of total?
It's, it's, Chairman, it's relating to existing domestic grounds. I think that's the point that was going to be raised. In the same consultation, the government says, we expect a lots of other consultations in the coming months addressing existing domestic buildings.
Mr Brown, Mr Roxy.
Yes, a question again about the environment with regards to, I mean, this panel is actually not, at the moment, we are building, the task and finish group are building a biodiversity policy. And I'm just wondering how that's going to dovetail into this plan? Because we're still a little bit down the road as to finishing and coming up with some hard and fast policies.
So the policy EN 9 and EN 10 deal with biodiversity and blue breeding structure. I would suggest that if the council determines that this is its policy element, that policy that you're creating needs to dovetail the world's EN here.
Want to come back on that either? Mrs Fox, who's chairing that subgroup effectively.
I defer to Mrs Fox.
Do you want to come back, Mr Roxy? You don't have to defer.
Well, as Mrs Fox is the chair, I think it's probably better coming than her.
So are you suggesting what we're actually doing in this?
Chair, can I point out paragraph 751 and 752? 751 in particular, and 750. The council and its partners will carry out further work to identify and map appropriate areas to have that restoration creation, nature improvement, etcetera. And then 751, the biodiversity action plan, which I know the task and finish group has looked at, has identified priorities for improving biodiversity, which will include protecting, creating, etcetera. Also identifies priorities to improve diversity in Ruffordland, includes restoration, management, creation of that. And I think that ties in very much, I hope, with the work that the task and finish group are doing. So I don't see there's any real conflict in that work. And in particular, one of the things I think I'm very excited about in this document is about green corridors and the ability to develop green corridors.
Mr Roxy.
Are you happy with that? Okay. Well, I have some more questions about the environment. 1.7, strategic aim 1.7, delivering a sustainable, I'll read it, 1.7. Deliver. Thank you. Here we are. The environment policy to meet Rufford's needs and the challenge of climate change. Now, Councillor Jones has written to say, it should include strategic aim of creating a roadmap to carbon neutrality by 2050. Imperative that we need to reduce carbon footprint is a priority aim. Climate change should be climate crisis. The world has just experienced the hottest ever decade, using milder wording such as climate change underplays this critical issue. So she's questioning why we're saying climate crisis when it's, climate change is actually climate crisis. She also likes the inclusion of a strategic aim to mitigate noise, air and light pollution from new developments. And she said that, she, there's no mention of that, and I actually had a good look through as well after this evening. So she'd like to see the inclusion of a strategic aim to mitigate noise, air and light pollution from new developments.
I will ask officers, I'm a portfolio holder, to comment on the issue of light pollution. In the form of whether we should talk about climate change or climate crisis, I will come back to that at the end, when we are deciding what we want to put forward, is any recommendation to council that doesn't need to be commented on.
Chair, that particular priority theme is actually from the corporate plan. Council will be discussing that on Monday evening, out of 1.7. So there's an opportunity for all councils to raise questions at that point in time.
However, there is, there was a question raised about light pollution, which isn't in the local plan, so the officers like to comment or at least indicate what we are saying for those who've missed it.
Okay, so light pollution is covered by.
EN 18.
Thank you. I think it's also another one as well, actually. I think it's in one of the SC, the SC policies. I think it's in design, and also in place shaping policies, which are particularly in the EN environment chapter.
That's outdoor lighting, we're talking about in new developments.
Can you pick your mic?
I do a podcast, I do a podcast. The problem is, I was given these questions at three o'clock this afternoon, so I have my own questions. Now, I did speak to Councillor Jones. It's a strategic outcome from new developments, so that's, I think that's more relevant to housing rather than outdoor lighting. And, sorry, I'll fill the office up some more.
I think the issue is that light pollution comes from a number of sources. And whilst we might talk about dipping streetlights, that type of thing, are we saying anything specific in relation to totality of development, including domestic and industrial?
Can I answer the internal one, first of all? That is covered under building regs ultimately. So I think you'll find that all new houses will be required to have LED lighting as an standard. I can't say that for definite, but I'm, I suspect it will be. Check that out and come back to you in a minute. So as in turn, can I ask my colleagues to discuss the policies we have identified, as they find them in terms of external lighting?
I'm conscious of time. I would like to move on while officers are funding the answers. Oh, they found it.
Okay.
Okay, and policy EN 2, criteria 8. Policy says all new, all development policies will be assessed in relation to, and criteria 8 is air, noise, dust and light pollution. Okay. Any more internal ones? Mr Peggy, I'm going first. And there's Mrs Payne and then Mr Roxy.
Thank you. I've read through the environment in some detail. And one bit I find a little bit wishy-washy is, there's a lot of mention of measurements of biodiversity and the replacement of biodiversity. There's no mention of what that measure may be and how you will measure it. I'm wondering what that measure may be or what's the recommendation that, a detail of what that measure should be included.
Can we take Mrs Payne's question while you're talking about, you found it now?
So the monitoring framework in chapter 10 sets out the targets and the indicators that we use to want to eat policy. And there's a target indicator and source indicator in that.
Okay, I'll reread that and I'll come back to you in a second.
Mrs Payne.
Thank you. Policy I see to look at securing sustainable transport. This question is pertinent to my own members. As far as mineral resources is concerned, in some areas, we're negatively impacted by minerals spoken by contractors and member counties. Will our CCB working with Northamptonshire County Council ensure that they adopt the same policy?
So Northamptonshire County Council currently provide our noise waste service through a central agreement. So yes, we are working with Northamptonshire County Council. And we, yes, again, through duty to cooperate with all of our neighbouring county councils in terms of waste and renewable materials. Mr Roxy.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So priority theme, strategic aims, environmental issues, actually may be required to meet the water quality framework. So she's asking for an explanation of that, cost and risk implications. Full wastewater treatment works do not have the capacity to accept further wastewater from the growth without increasing the volumes they are consented to discharge. So are these located in their areas marked for development and what are the cost and risk implications? And what are the cost and risk implications? So it's really about the infrastructure, the whole counting, how growth will impact on our ability to, on our ability to handle any wastewater.
Okay, so the plan is accompanied by an infrastructure delivery plan, which looks at all of the infrastructure required to support development proposed in the plan. The information in that document has come directly from the service providers. So the wastewater treatment works are primarily under annual water, but they also cover by several kinds of water for a small part of the county. That indicates what is required and what is already planned for within their own asset management plans. And improvements to the open wastewater treatment works is included within their current, annual water's current asset management plan. So improvements to that. Both annual water and the environment agency have confirmed that they are happy that that addresses any plus tissues that we can treat and work for the developers proposed that would be needed to it. The wastewater treatment works that serves the St George's site is included within the policy that there is required to improve that. And that's part of costs of the development costs that have been discussed. Apart from that, there are no issues that have been raised by the water authorities related to the wastewater treatment.
Can I come back on that?
Yes.
It's just, I mean, having, I remember what happened at Stockton Prison. I think, I'm not sure if there is an issue with waste from the prison actually flowing into the surrounding area, so...
Hope it doesn't.
But, so officers are confident that there is sufficient space to handle all the new infrastructure. Thank you.
Any other questions on environmental issues?
Yeah.
Mark?
This one is about cycle, cycle tracks, which is a subject I'm very close to my heart. So looking through this, it states that policy SC 2, securing sustainable transport, seven, will support the delivery of an integrated walking and cycling network and associated provisions, connecting new developments to essential services in neighboring communities. And so, and I think that the cost is actually going to be looked at from developers rather than from the council. So, I mean, I would like to see more emphasis placed on sustainable transport links, which perhaps we may have more control over from government funding and the like, rather than placing most of the emphasis on developers and developments.
So there's two elements to that, that question. Chapter 10 includes a series of policies that relate to each individual site, and that's like a list of requirements that each site needs to provide to the development. Including within some of those are the need for footways and cycleways to connect development to, either to the existing services, or because there is no footway along the existing, et cetera, things like that. So those, those have all come through our sustainable transport team, and they are all included in the infrastructure delivery plan as well. That's one element of it. So the developer will be expected to provide the infrastructure that is required to secure development. And if that means a cycle or footway, that's included within those policies. I think the other element of it is a bit more of a strategic route way that you're talking about. And that is covered by both the local transport plan, which has been approved by the council, but also will come forward through the document that they call LSEW. Local cycle improvement plan, there you go, which is being developed at the moment, and I understand is going to go through council process during this year.
Yeah, I may just very quickly come back on that, because, I mean, there are, there is a need for cycleways in areas which are a long way away from any development, and that's, that's to make sure that they are not forgotten as well.
I think the critical thing here is about making sure we integrate local plans with the council plan, so that, you know, we're, through the local plan, we can address some of that through development. And then, you know, it's not, then making sure we join up with what the local transport plan is doing to pick up some of the issues that we're seeing on that.
Thank you.
Anything else on environment? Members, do you have any other comments or issues to address?
I'll just raise a...
Yes, please.
Process question. It's about neighbour plans. Could you let me know in term of timescales and the progress of the local plan, when neighbour plans normally have been meant to support a local plan, and will they have to go through the whole consultation process again?
It's a very good question. Obviously, the test for neighbour plans, it comes as through the examination process and two basic conditions, is that they need to be in general conformity to the strategic policies in the local plan. So the test for those up to now has been, to ensure conformity has been against the qualifications and the course strategy. When the local plan kicks in, new local neighbour plans will obviously, in terms of the immediate basic conditions, will need to take account of policies in the emerging plan. For those that have already been made, it's a judgment really, you know, they are still a made plan, so they are still part of the development plan system. So the starting point really is to assess what's in your plan and to see how it relates to the emerging policies in the plan, to see that there is any conflict in the areas of change, whether you would want to make a change to the plan, pick up on a specific issue, or, you know, the navigation design in your parish that came out of the local plan, and you want to look at some more detail to incorporate in the local plan. So I should question about what process you would be going through, the degree depends on the degree of change you're making to the plan. So if it's minimal, you know, it can be made quite easily. If it's about making changes to policy, then effectively it's about going through the whole process of gain of consultation, examination and referendum. So the regulations stay, it's about material change that we're making. It don't have to happen, although increasingly, and given neighbour plans, there's, I might look, I understand we have to review this on a five-yeared basis. There's no requirement to review on a five-year basis. Obviously, the more outdated it is, and, you know, there's the same issue for neighbour plans, as for local plans, it's that, you know, they have been done prior to changes for most cases, except the recent ones that were made through national planning process framework. So we would encourage certainly first make plans to be reviewed themselves anyway, and certainly up being a plan to do that, because the plan includes, or, you know, taking that as considered, making allocations for their own brothers, you know, they can, they can stay as they are, but obviously the risk is that the way that's there attached to those decisions can be issued over time. So we would still encourage your neighbour plans to look at review, and then see whether you're, what the extent of change was, if it's material enough that they're improving for consultation, referendum, and that.
Are you content with that? Yes.
Come and talk to us, yeah, those groups, come and talk to us.
I will come to you in a moment, Mr Oxley. We do have a number of councillors here who aren't on this panel. I would like to give them the opportunity to ask any of their questions or make their comments, but we have only seven minutes left. Can I have a proposal to extend for a further 15 minutes, please? Thank you, Mark, and I'll take Nick for second. Are we all in agreement? Is it an abstention or are we engaged? Come again. Mark?
Do you want to ask the...
No, I want to finish the panel member's question first.
Okay, yeah. This is, this is regarding to education. Strategic priority, priority themes, strategic aim 2.6, to provide an inclusive and, sorry, I do apologize, I do apologize. 2.6, priority theme, strategic aim, what are we trying to achieve? To provide an inclusive and high-quality learning offer and to support the expansion of our schools and learning to meet new needs. But there's no specific mention of special needs.
Do you wish to take that, Mr Brown?
I do, Chair. It's the same answer as the previous one. It is part of the corporate plan, and therefore we discussed on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from panel members at this stage? Councillors who are not panel members, do any of you wish to ask questions or make a comment on this? Mr Brown?
Do you want me to come to the microphone?
Yes, please.
There you go. I'm just slightly concerned about the road infrastructure, because it says, we've got a good level of assurance around the likely impacts on road network. That doesn't really mean anything to me. A good level of assurance of what?
Mr Anderson?
Just checking to see where you're referring to.
Sorry, you're saying what?
Where, which particular one is it?
Well, 3.46, and I've got page 35. Now, which of those documents that is? I haven't, after 966 pages, I can't tell you. But a good level of assurance could be, a good level of assurance, it's going to be all. Do you want me to research where that is and then come back?
Would you help us know which document it is?
Yes, all right, I'll do that.
We'd be happy to respond.
Do you have any other questions, Mr Brown?
No.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Before you go, Mr Brown, are you content that you've done that outside this meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that for everybody. If there are no other questions or comments, do you want the councillors and members of the panel, despite they've asked everything they want? We do have before us two recommendations. The first one is to note the document, which I'm not going to spend any time considering. The second one is to provide any final comments, the consideration, it says by Cabinet and Council, although I think in reality it will be by Council, because that is where this document goes next. The only suggestion I have heard, and please correct me if I'm wrong, ladies and gentlemen, is that we ask for a change from climate change to climate crisis. Now, would members be content for that to go forward? Please, if the answer is yes, who would you show it? One, two, three, four, five, six, sorry, six. And against, one. So we will formally request that the document is changed to reflect the term climate crisis rather than climate change. Is, was there anything else that I've missed that we would like to go forward? And I have to say, it's very easy to miss when you're actually listening to the questions and answers. No, fine, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing extra time. In fact, we've managed to finish at 9:29. Thank you. And thank you all of your patience staying.